And good afternoon. Welcome to Glendale City Council Workshop Session, October 25th, 2022. Meeting is called to order. We will do an attendance roll call. I have one council member I don't see. Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Hugh?
Here.
Councilmember Melner?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Well, that was noisy. Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Good time and Vice Mayor Alabama?
Present.
And I'm present. Everyone is accounted for. Ms. Bauer, would you lead us into item number one, please?
Performance-based contracts.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Here for the first item today on this afternoon's agenda will be presented by Michelle Watanke, our Director of Field Operations, and by Charles Thomas, our Deputy Director of Field Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. This is a follow-up presentation to our presentation we did back on March 23rd, 2021. We came to council in a workshop to discuss performance-based contracts. And at that time, we also went through preliminary assessments. So a performance-based contract is really a budget-neutral contract where building improvements can be funded by the energy savings. It's another way to look at that. It's just a low-risk method to fund upgrades. Benefit of it is that the energy savings will extend beyond that budget payback portion. And we should then continue to see the savings. So as I said, we presented this workshop on March 23rd, 2021. So just to remind you of what we did, at that time, we went through preliminary assessments, and this is a step in these energy performance-saving contracts. Went through preliminary assessments where we identified some locations, some systems and measures. When we got council consensus at that workshop, we did come back for formal approval of two contracts in June of 2021, and those contracts were to actually do the investment-grade audits. So today's presentation is going to focus on the results of the investment-grade audit. And at the end of the presentation, we're going to ask for council consensus to move forward. And if we get that consensus, then there will be formal contracts coming back. With that, I'd like to actually turn it over to Mr. Thomas, who's going to do the bulk of the presentation today.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. So I wanted to start off just explaining what an investment-grade audit is. I would categorize this as a step for all parties to gain enough information to really determine if the juice is worth the squeeze to do a project of this size and this magnitude. Each service provider and customer is different, so that answer could vary based on the organization. This audit is also a detailed look at these projects in order to take it to the bank and secure financing, if that's the route that a customer, not necessarily us, but a customer would elect to take. Without an investment-grade audit, no bank would provide financing for a project like this. In performance-based contracts, there are energy-saving guarantees that the contractor will provide to the customer. These guarantees present a certain level of risk to the service provider. And because of that, the investment-grade audit stage is key to get accurate cost and saving projections, not only for a bank, but for the customer and the service provider. These guarantees reduce the risk of the customer, because if the savings is less than what's projected, the service provider will ultimately be responsible for paying the customer back the difference. There are caveats to that, though. There's a specific use of the building when the investment-grade audit is underway. If the use of that building changes after the investment-grade audit and before the project, then some of those guarantees can be negatively impacted. And an example I would use would be if today, we use council chambers most heavily on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and we decided after the investment-grade audit that we would make council chambers a community theater that we would use every night. That would impact what the savings were projected at the use, where it was Tuesdays and Thursdays was heavy usage. Now it's heavy usage every day. So the savings would actually change and negatively impact those guarantees, because we changed the use of the building after the investment-grade audit. After council approval, we went through the investment-grade audit process with both service providers. And the following slides will go over Pilot Project Number One overview. I will go into detail on some slides, just to make sure that council understands the magnitude and the scope of some of these projects. This slide is simply a review of what was presented to you before. This information is a cost breakdown on the preliminary assessment that was presented to council in March of 2021. As you can see, there was already some CIP planned that would overlap with some of the items suggested in the preliminary assessment. These projects were based on estimated costs at the time. This was before the investment-grade audit was approved by council. This was only at the preliminary assessment stage. The next few slides will spell out the scope, and the scope that was established after the investment-grade audit was approved by council and completed. This is an exterior LED lighting retrofit planned for Foothills and Main Library. The cost of this project was proposed at roughly $33,000 with a projected annual savings of $5,700. This individual project would have a simple payback of about 5.8 years. And simple payback means the savings will pay for the project over the next 5.8 years. And you can calculate that by dividing the cost of the project by the annual energy savings to get to that 5.8. As a side note, this does not include any pole replacements, infrastructure. This is only retrofitting the current light fixtures to be LEDs. This slide describes the interior LED retrofit plan for Foothills, Velmatique, and Main Library. The cost projected was $385,000 roughly, with an annual energy savings of about $45,000. Individual project would have a simple payback of 8.6 years. I want to draw some attention to that footnote at the bottom of the screen. If you can't read that, I'll read it out loud. Hours of operation based off of published hours. And that's what we were talking about a couple of slides ago, when we were talking about how the use of the building may change after the investment-grade audit. So this investment-grade audit at the libraries was done based on the hours posted, the open hours posted at the time of the investment-grade audit. So if the hours changed at the libraries after the investment-grade audit, then our savings and all those calculations would change as well. This project is a chiller replacement at Foothills with some control modifications. And I want you to bear with me as I give you some details on these projects. Based on the investment-grade audit, it was found that the newer chiller didn't need to have as much cooling capacity as the older chiller due to efficiency. So the chiller that we replaced the old chiller with wouldn't need to be as large as the chiller that's there now, just based on efficiency. In addition to that, at the time of the audit, the chiller's set point was a fixed 45 degrees, which caused us wasted energy in the cooler runs. How I would explain that would be, you know, today is a perfect day to explain that, where it's cooler outside. We may not need as much cooling in this area of the room, but maybe there's a server room or an IT room behind the scenes that needs cooling all the time. If we had a chiller in this building and we set it at 45 degrees, it would reach 45 degrees to cool that IT room, and then it would shut off. And then it would reach 45 degrees again, and then it would shut off. And as you do that in a short amount of time, we would describe that as the chiller short-cycling. And every time it comes on, your energy usage goes up when it comes on, and then off, and then up again, and then off. So short cycling, I'll use that term a couple of times in here. I just wanted to explain it before I said it. The improvements will have the chiller's reference outside air temperature and the cooling demand inside the building to automatically change the set point on the chiller to avoid overcooler space and short cycling, like I explained before. This improvement would also prevent overheating and cooling in the space at the same time. If the chiller's running and you don't need that much cooling in the space, it gets cold in one area, then the heat comes on in the same area while you're cooling at the same time. It just doesn't make sense. So that improvement would prevent things like that happening at the libraries. In addition to that, we will be doing new, excuse me, two chillers will be replacing two chillers and one cooling tower at another library. The major, and, excuse me, the new chillers will be screw chillers instead of reciprocating chillers. This was a discovery in the investment-grade audit, and the major benefit of going from a screw chiller, from a reciprocating chiller to a screw chiller is they have fewer moving parts and less points of failure on those screw chillers versus the reciprocating chillers. In addition to that, a lot of reciprocating chillers only have three major stages. So they will come on at 33%, the next stage is 66%, the next stage is 99%. And again, a day like today, where it's very cool outside, a lot of building guys will call this the shoulder season, before it's full winter, before it's peak of the summer. In the shoulder season, when it's cool in the morning, a little warm in the afternoon, if you only need a little bit of cooling, 10% cooling in the building is what you need, but the chiller comes on at 33%, then it's going to short-cycle again on you. So all those projects at both libraries would be replacement of the chiller, replacing the cooling tower, and changing those controls to automatically adjust that chiller set point based on what we need in the building and the outside air temperature. The cost of this project is about...
Hold on.
I'm sorry.
Before we go too far, I have questions on those projects. So should I wait till you've finished all three pilot projects, or is it a good time now?
That was a good time.
Okay. Exterior lighting. You mentioned something that I would like explained more fully. You said that with regard to the lighting, it would be to replace the bulbs only. Do you know if it's going to require major infrastructure changes to the poles or any of the other supporting equipment to run those LED lights? And if so, what is the cost of doing that upgrade to the infrastructure?
Mayor, members of council, I, Councilmember Clark, during the assessment, we checked and make sure that the poles that we were going to retrofit didn't have any significant damage to them. If we discovered that there was significant damage to a pole or infrastructure, we would address it at that time. But when we did our initial preliminary assessment and then moved forward with the investment-grade audit, there was no significant damage to the poles that we were trying to address. And if, in between the time of the investment-grade audit and getting approval from council to do that project...
Okay. I understand that something might happen to one of the poles in the meantime. But you are assuring me that there will be no additional cost to retrofit or upgrade the infrastructure equipment to support the LED lighting. That's what you're telling us.
Mayor, members of council, what he's saying here is, don't expect new poles, where new poles are not warranted. I think as we get into some of these...
I got that.
I think as we get into some of these projects, he'll tell you why some costs have changed, because part of the investment-grade audit was to make sure the infrastructure and everything else was there to support it. So while in the exterior lighting project, we haven't seen that, you'll see in some of the other projects, he's had to add those costs in to do just that.
Okay.
But on this project, these two projects, the electrical infrastructure is there to support these LED lights, and the poles were found to be in condition where they can accept them.
Well, that's good news. With regard to the mechanical system savings that you were talking about, and the chillers and all of that stuff, which half of I don't understand, but I do understand this as a homeowner. At one time, we had variable-speed air conditioners. I would never get another variable-speed air conditioner again in my life. Drove up the cost of our electric bill by about 200 bucks a month. And when we went back to the other kind, the bill dropped again. What makes you so sold on variable, I don't even know what you call them, but variable machinery for these projects? And how do you know that the variable machinery will not drive up costs? Because it stops flat when the temperature is reached. Then when the temperature calls for it to go on, it has to kick back on at a full start. So explain to me how variable equipment is a cost-saving.
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Clark, this is a little bit different than a variable-speed air conditioner at a home. These chillers take water and chill them down to, you know, 45 degrees in order to supply that chilled water to a coil downstream on what we would call a terminal unit, an air handler or a fan coil. I know that this would reduce the energy, because when we start a unit at 33%, these chillers, some of these chillers have 1,000 amp breakers. And when you start a chiller at 33%, when you only need 10%, it's only going to run for a little bit, and it's going to turn off, and it's going to turn back on, it's going to turn off, and it's going to turn back on all day long. And every time that chiller turns on, depending on when you use the energy, because that's what's important, sometimes not how much you use, but when you use it. When you're using those spikes during peak demand time, and I know I'm getting way down in the weeds, but APS and SRP wait for us to use those spikes, and that's where the cost drivers are. So we want to smooth those spikes out and ramp the chiller up slow, and then ramp it down slow. We don't want to bang it on and off all day.
Okay. I have to trust you, because I have no clue. But is there any other city that uses variable-speed equipment? And have you talked to them? And have they commented on whether the equipment has been worth the investment or not?
Mayor, members of the council members, excuse me, Councilmember Clark, I haven't talked to other cities, but from a facilities perspective, I've done this myself for quite a long time. I've done this in the medical office buildings, commercial office buildings. And I've done this myself outside of the city of Glendale, even at State Farm Stadium, and saved significant amount of money doing projects just like this.
I mean, I bow to your expertise, but it doesn't hurt to check with other people who are using the same kind of stuff and find out what's good about it and what's bad about it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a quick question before you go on. This equipment right now, it's my understanding, is not cost-effective. It's expensive to run, but it's working. Is that correct?
Mayor, members of the council, as you saw on that first slide when you reviewed the 2021 presentation, this equipment is actually in our capital plan today, because while it's working, it's not going to work much longer. So whether we do it as part of this project or another project, these will be replaced.
Okay, it's not a loaded question, but it is working.
They are working today.
Yeah, and I know it is, because I was shivering in my office about an hour ago. It was like really cold. So where I was going with that is, you take that equipment out, you put the new equipment in, where's the old equipment go?
Mayor, members of council, we have to get rid of that. This old chiller uses refrigerant that isn't part of the new EPA regulations. So they would remove all the refrigerant from that, recycle it properly, and then that new chiller goes off to be recycled. Maybe they'll cannibalize it to use parts in other places, but for the most part, that chiller goes away.
And that's really where my question was, is being that they're working, is there not an option to sell it to maybe a third-world country or some other place that might need technology that we look at as old technology to them? That might be a huge upgrade from fans. Anyway, Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor. And so, as I recall it, we, and I was looking for it in the presentation and in the staff memo, we had two companies that we had do these audits. And so I'm just curious, are we going to identify which companies did which audits in this presentation?
Mayor and councilmembers, yeah, we'll go through each. Pilot one is one company, Pilot two is a second company, and we kept them that way, just to keep them separate, so we understood what was going on. If you want us to identify the companies that did it, we'd be happy to do so. But we do have two separate projects to identify each company that did this work for us.
So, yeah, I'd like to have them identified, which company did which, please.
Okay.
I'm sorry. So the cost of this project is roughly $776,000, with an annual estimated savings of about Keep in mind, as Ms. Watanke said, this is already planned in our CIP, and whether we do these pilot programs or not, we were going to replace these chillers and that cooling tower, because they were at the end of their useful life. And then I'll explain a couple of benefits of doing this project as a collaborative effort towards the end.
I have another question. You're saying that the payback will take 59 years, right?
Yes, ma'am.
The equipment's not going to last 59 years, so we'll still be paying off equipment that has died and had to be replaced at some point. So where's the benefit in a payback of 59 years?
It's, Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Clark, the benefit really is, well, separating the two, without this project, we have to replace the chiller regardless. So if we replace the chiller as part of our CIP program, the payback on that would be 59 years. So it doesn't really, I don't want to say it doesn't matter, but we have to replace the chiller, whether we do it as part of this program or not. The benefit of it, and I'll get into that in greater detail later, is the benefit of it is combining some of these projects. So we can go in as a field operations department and say, hey, we're going to take this chiller that's this size and replace it with this chiller that's this size. But then we may miss, can we downsize the chiller? How do we control it to make sure that it automatically adjusts the 45 degrees to 55 degrees, so the mayor's not freezing in his office when he doesn't want to? All those things that combine into that one project would be the benefit of collaborating with these companies.
Mayor, if I could continue. But that's going to happen with or without a pilot project, because you've said repeatedly, this is going to be done. The chillers are going to be replaced, period. So I would think, as a matter of due diligence, whether it was part of a pilot project or not, you would look at getting the best, most efficient equipment. I mean, I don't understand why this has to be part of a pilot. What's the benefit in sticking this particular project in a pilot program when we need to do it anyhow, and the payback is a ridiculous 59 years?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Clark, let's not look at this one slide in a vacuum or in a silo by itself. Let's look at it where if we combine the projects, do some of the lighting projects that have a much quicker payback, we can actually have them help pay off this mechanical system. So we can do a lot of this required replacement with some of the energy savings from other projects as well. And so Mr. Thomas will get there towards the end, when he shows you the benefit of combining these projects, and when you look at it in totality, how the energy savings for a few of them will pay for the others as well.
One final question for me about what she was saying. When you figured your payoff time, did you look at today's current rates, or did you try to anticipate what the rates are going to be 40 years from now?
Do you mean energy rates?
Correct.
Yes, sir. There's a standard escalator in the investment-grade audit that will escalate the utility costs throughout the totality of the project. Some, the simple payback doesn't cover that, but in totality, there is a study in the investment-grade audit that has the escalators on the utility rates, standard escalators. If there's a spike, if APS or SRP decided they wanted to go up to 6%, that wouldn't be part of the standard escalation, but there is some calculations in there.
I would expect in the future that we'll see some drastic energy charges. And as far as payback, I think anybody expecting a total payback, that's just almost a pipe dream. And I think Councilmember Clark's right, we're probably not going to see it before the equipment's wore out. But if we're getting a better investment and a better quality and using less electricity, it still needs to get done anyway, so.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, you just hit the nail on the head, is what I was asking to make some comments. I think we're too focused, hyper-focused on, good questions, great questions. I think we're hyper-focused on the monetary payback. We're going to do it anyway, so if we can get some monetary payback, let's get it, even if it takes forever, but we're going to get some. What we have to focus on is the operational efficiency. It's going to cool the place much better for our employees and for our visitors, and we're going to save energy, and we're going to spend less time on fixing the darn thing. This thing is done. Parts for this are pretty much obsolete. You probably can't get them, you have to take them off and rebuild them. We're not going to do that. A new chiller will have parts available that are probably out at sea somewhere, but you can get them, they'll be available for the next 20, 25 years. So what I'm focused on is seeing that there is a rate of return, but I'm more focused on the efficiency of the equipment that's going to cool our buildings for our employees and for our visitors. So I think we're missing that. And so, very interesting. And then I wanted to help Councilmember Clark a little bit. Just happens to be a subject I'm really versed in. The variable frequency drives, the VFDs, Councilmember, are used throughout the industry. If you're at a commercial facility, you'll use VFDs to start up big, large motors and fans. If you start the motor without the VFD, it goes direct, and you can't run that fan at a certain speed that high all the time. So it just varies the speed. If you can cool your building with less energy, why wouldn't you want to do that than to run it at a higher speed? So you're going to talk about all that, but I just wanted to help the Councilmember that VFDs are used throughout commercial facilities in the industry. Thank you.
Thank you. The audit also covered some of our parks and the park lighting. This list of parks were part of the initial assessment, the preliminary assessment. This is retrofits only. Again, just like we talked about before, no new poles, retrofits, the actual fixtures only. The fixtures stay in place, we gut them, and then we put the LEDs inside the existing fixtures. This will take some coordination with the Parks Department, and will cost roughly $650,000, with an annual energy savings of around $72,000, which comes to about a nine-year simple payback.
And Mayor and council, as Vice Mayor was saying there, this is a simple payback based upon energy savings. This doesn't take into account staff time. So now, when we do this project, we'd have all these parks with new lighting and less maintenance trips out there to replace or fix a lighting. So there's those maintenance costs, and they're not factored into this. This is just a simple payback based upon our energy savings alone.
Thank you. Did you check the infrastructure? Are there hidden infrastructure costs associated with replacing the park lighting?
Councilmember Clark, not as part of this project, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. The Councilmember asked a question, you answered. No, there aren't them. But just, will you explain, because I want to make sure that we all understand that while there's no infrastructure needs, and that's pretty clear, that there could be some unforeseen's that you may have to come back, and we're going to be like, hey, you said there was nothing. Can you talk about unforeseen's that you just don't know yet that you'll see when you start to pull things apart? Can you talk about an unforeseen example, just so that we know that might happen later?
Sure, sure. And doing some of these projects, we came up with some of those unforeseen's. So one of the things were, when we did Akoma Park, there's a new code that says you need to have a junction box at the bottom of every pole. We didn't know that when we scoped out the original job. So it was a small change order, it was $1,000. We added new junction boxes, we pulled new wire to it, and we went on. But that was already built into the contingency of that project. It wasn't part of any performance-based contracting. Separate project that Field Operations partnered with Parks with, Parks and Field Operations worked together to make sure we had that. worked together to make sure we had that contingency in place. Once we did the project and we pulled the poles, we realized we need to have a junction box at the bottom of the pole. We did that, did the change order and moved on. So they, they generally will build in, you know, 5, 10, 15% contingency in those, part of those projects, and that's what that contingency was used for. I, I wanted to show this slide as an example. You can't really put dollar amounts to the benefit of doing some of these LED upgrades at parks and, and interiors. You can see on the, on the left side, Akoma Park before, we did those drone shots, these are not edited pictures. That's exactly how it looked before, before we did the, the lighting upgrade at Akoma Park. If you look to the right, that was after. I've, I've had PD come to me, come to the Parks Department and say, it's amazing, we can drive by that park and park on the curb and see from end to end color of shirts, you name it, without having to get out and walk through the park to see what's going on in that park. So you, you can't really put a dollar amount to that, but I just wanted to kind of highlight, these are projects that we've worked with parks and already done. So I wanted to kind of show an example of that, just, just so everybody could see.
Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. To that point, this, these new LED fixtures and heads, they have the ability to hold back the splash you might get from lighting up into neighbors' yards and that sort of thing. It appears that it's fairly well-controlled in this photograph, but that's something, that's another benefit that we can expect.
Yes.
Thank you.
I was, thank you, Mayor. I was going to ask a similar question. I'm not sure, do we have a dark sky ordinance that we have to follow or are we following any of that? The, the before lighting is really poor and the LED example is just great, but are we following anything like that?
We, we do follow standard dark sky regulations. They're not as stringent as it is in Tucson where they have an observatory, but we do follow those standard guidelines, yes, sir.
And then just for citizens, the product you're buying will, will, will cause that lighting to stay downward and not go up. That's, you're buying that?
Yes.
Thank you.
As part of the entire project, measurement, control, management, and verification of the systems is important to maintain the standard energy saving that was proposed in the investment grade audit. This system will allow us to get alerted of changes made that would impact the standard comfort guidelines and energy savings in real time and give us an opportunity to correct it before it has a long-term negative impact on the city. Gives us additional tools to be more proactive and hold us accountable to keeping the standards laid out in the investment grade audit. And so I, I want to give you an example of a system that I used at a previous job. We got a system like this, we did something similar to a performance-based contract and purchased the system along with it, some control systems. And there was an air handler, air conditioning unit on a medical office building that could not maintain a proper supply temperature. And so I get a phone call and gentleman says, hey, Charles, your supply temperature is high, but your compressors are running full cooling mode and you can't keep, you can't keep a good supply temperature. It's going to get hot in your building here soon. You need to go up there and take a look at it. Something's going on up there. And I, I went up there and sure enough, the week prior, one of my technicians had done maintenance and the door fell off of it and we were sucking in 120-degree air. I went up there, put the door back on it, supply temperature went down, the, the compressors and the cooling capacity went down, and it only took me five minutes to get up on the roof and take care of that versus if we didn't have a system like that and we didn't get those alerts and I didn't get that phone call, that, that thing might have been running like that for a day or two and would cost me a significant amount of money. So this system helps us do exactly that.
Mayor? I have one, one follow-up question. For Pilot Project One, and you may not have the figures, maybe you, you'll need to research them for us. What is the total cost for the entire Project One and all the components to it? What is the price of all the projects? Like you've got 300,000 here, 700,000 there. So what is the total cost for Pilot Project One? And what is the total amount of savings, energy savings you hope to achieve? Give me that if you can.
Okay.
And if not, you can send it to us.
Absolutely. Councilmember Clark, that's, that's on the next slide we have up here. The total cost of, of Pilot Project Number One and for Councilmember Tomachov, this is Midstate Mechanical, is one, roughly 1.8, little over 1.8 million dollars. We round up to 1.9, 1.9 million dollars with an annual estimated energy savings of $136,000. That would put us at a 13.6-year payback. And so just, this is Ms. Wataneko mentioned earlier, when you talk about that chiller that's a 56 or 59-year payback, when you combine all those projects together, you get just under 14-year payback. Now, we talked about earlier what we already plan to do in our capital program. So essentially, the money for a large portion of this project is already in our capital. So if you subtract what we already have in our capital, now we're talking about roughly $310,000 with an annual energy saving of about $136,000. So now your simple payback goes from 13.6 years to 2.3 years on, on the, on the additional money that we're asking for.
Thank you, Mayor. Charles, so what, what, how far out was this capital planned for? Was it for this next, for this, this CIP year, next CIP year, in three years? When were we planning on making this improvement? It's how it exists in our CIP currently?
The Councilmember Tomachov, 2022 and 2023 is when we plan to do these projects. And as we were, in, at the same time, we were doing the investment grade audit. So we paused and said, it's possible that, so we don't have to come back and ask for the entire lot, that we could combine these CIP projects and invest that CIP dollar into the total cost of the performance-based contract to do all these projects all at once.
Okay. Mayor, if I could, what, so what is our replacement policy on something like a chiller? What do we do now? Do we, is it, I mean, it's just in, in 15 years, we are, we're right, how are we programming our CIP for things like this? So we just were assuming that the chiller is at the end, at its end of life? Or how do we program these into the, what is our policy, how we program these into the CIP?
Councilmember Tomachov, there's a, there's a plethora of things that go into that. Age goes into that. I don't want to bore you with the details, but there's something on a chiller called Approach where you know what the interior coils of the chiller's doing, how many times that the chiller's failed, how often or how available parts are, what the refrigerant usage is. All those things go into the, into the planning of placing that piece of equipment. And just like Vice Mayor Adama said, the parts available to that chiller is slim to none. It would be a custom order or it would be something that somebody else cannibalized from an older chiller that was rebuilt that we would get. So we wouldn't even get, if we got parts for that chiller, likely the parts that we get wouldn't even be warranted. So we would just kind of be hanging out there hoping that the parts that we receive will work for a long enough time for us to get a new chiller. So we plan that. And like I said, what, doesn't matter on the outcome today, we would still replace that chiller as part of our CIP program.
One more thing, so does this save money on, on O and M and is that part of the adjusted, you know, the annual, you have annual, annual energy savings, but do we save money on O and M also on, by upgrading to a, you know, a newer, more energy-efficient system that's probably, you know, uses less freon or doesn't use, whatever? I don't even know how they run, I mean, I don't, really don't care, but, I mean, they're, they're, they're more efficient. Are they, are they cheaper during the life of the, of the chiller also because of the O and M?
Councilmember Tomachov, yes, we, we would repair it less. It would be less touch time for our technicians to have to go there and babysit it and limp it along on, on equipment that's that old. We didn't calculate that in there because, you know, like I mentioned earlier, the investment grade audit has to be able to be used by a bank and it's really difficult to calculate how much time I spend on something and what that cost is, trying to calculate drive time and gas and fuel and all those things that go into every time a technician touches that piece of equipment. So we, so those numbers are left out, but they're real numbers that are there. We would save on O and M, but the only thing that we could really put true numbers to would be the annual energy savings.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I, I've got a quick question and I don't want to keep dragging this out because we've got a lot of stuff to cover. Are these original chillers?
Yes, sir.
So, so they're all 30 years plus old?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So that was Project Number One, Pilot Project Number One from Midstate Mechanical. Now this is going to be Project Number Two from McKinstry. Just like Project One, this is the original estimated cost breakdown based on the preliminary assessment that was conducted and presented in 2021. Again, we did have some of these already planned in our CIP program. So the following slides will go through some of that, some of those details like we did in the last, on the last project. I wanted to note before we get too far, Advocacy Center is pulled out of this program because we couldn't, we couldn't wait. We did the Advocacy Center this year, it was recently completed. We replaced all the HVAC units at the Advocacy Center. So I didn't want to take that out for transparency. This is exactly what you saw in 2021 and I wanted to leave it on there, but I wanted to make note that the Advocacy Center HVAC would have been part of this program, but we, we could not wait. So we replaced those just, just a couple of months ago, that, that job was completed. So this is the adult, this is the adult center. The adult center has chilled water pumps that are slightly oversized, causing energy to be wasted. Moving water too fast through a chiller causes the chiller to work harder than designed. The plan is to size the pumps appropriately for the size of the building at 100% occupancy and control the speed of the pumps based on the need of the chiller and the building. In addition to the pumps being oversized, I don't know if you guys can see that picture, but the strainers are used to filter out the sediment in the water before it gets to the pumps. Those strainers are facing that block wall right there in, in that picture to the left and it's virtually impossible to get the, get up some tools in there and get a body in there and pull that strainer out to do proper PMs. So as part of this project, we'll right-size the chiller, or excuse me, we'll right-size the pumps and we'll add variable speed drives, but we'll also reconfigure this setup so we can reach the strainers and perform those proper PMs, and that's going to impact the longevity of the equipment. But you won't get any energy savings from relocating the strainers. In addition to that, it's not pictured here, but there's an expansion tank that's in that room. It's rusting and failing. That's part of that. It's not, it hasn't failed yet, but it doesn't have a whole lot of time left. So that will all be part of this if approved today. But again, you won't get a tremendous amount of energy savings from relocating the strainer and replacing that, that expansion tank. But it is a cost driver as part of this project. And I want to keep reiterating that these projects need to happen whether we're talking about performance-based contracting or not. So we would likely do this project regardless, potentially in our CRP, maybe not adding new variable speed drives, but those pumps would be right-sized whether we do performance-based contracting or not. This is also the adult center. This is the cooling tower or, you know, it's a fluid cooler, but commonly known as a cooling tower over at the adult center. This cooling tower has some custom features on it that, you know, I want to explain because that's part of the cost drivers of this. That cooling tower precools the water from relief air that comes from inside the building. So when we replace that cooling tower, we have to rebuild those custom functions back into that cooling tower because that was the original design intent of the building. This is the only cooling tower at the adult center, so as, as part of the continuity of operations spaces, we all know people are going on to the second floor of that building. And we want to make sure that not only are we going to have energy savings as part of the baseline, but also reliability as we move people into that building to support other projects. That, the cost of that project is roughly $555,000. And like I said, the, one of the major cost drivers is rebuilding that custom functionality back into the cooling tower as designed. This is the cooling tower at Foothills Recreation and Aquatic Center. We, we call that FRAC. This cooling tower is unique, similar condition as the cooling tower at the adult center, but the location of the cooling tower, and again, I want to just give you guys this, these details because the investment grade audit did go into all these details of who, what, when, where, and why and how. So where that cooling tower is located, there's high voltage power lines right outside the enclosure of where that cooling tower sits. So we can't pick up the cooling tower in a, in an area that makes sense because there's power lines involved. You can't put a crane, you can't pick up a piece of equipment and drag it over top of a power line. So we have to get one of the largest cranes in the state of Arizona to pick up that cooling tower from in front of FRAC in the parking lot and lift it and bring it over top of the building to get it out of there. In addition to that, if you see in the picture on the right, the infrastructure that's holding the cooling tower up is starting to fail. So when we lift that cooling tower, all that bracing, all those I-beams, we would be replacing that as well as part of this project. So the crane, the infrastructure, all those things that are major cost drivers, you wouldn't necessarily get energy savings from that, but it is necessary when we do that project. So that, that would be another major cost driver of doing all that.
So Mayor, Council, one of the real advantages we got from doing the investment grade audit was actually uncovering some of these. And typically we would be coming back with change orders in the middle of the project or, you know, when we found these conditions. We've, we've done a, a lot of work behind the scenes and doing a lot of investigation on this. We've, we've found a lot of these things. We hope we found them all, but typically going into construction projects, as Vice Mayor alluded to, you're not going to find everything and there might be some others. But I think what Mr. Thomas is trying to get to is, is why these projects have changed in cost too, is we've tried to, we can't do the cooling tower without doing this structure that holds it as well. Otherwise, we're coming back in a couple of years or maybe even a couple of months and redoing it. So do it, do it once, do it right and, and get it done properly is what, is what we're attempting to do here.
Also, as part of the preliminary assessment, oh, excuse me, wrong slide. Part of the preliminary assessment was, was lighting upgrades. I put an X on the Bead Museum and the Sign Building instead of deleting them just for transparency for you guys. The second floor of Sign Building is currently under construction and the Bead Museum will be part of the Continuity of Operations project. So those were excluded from this, this project list, but I just wanted to show them for transparency because I, I think, I think you guys might have seen this slide before. The findings of the investment grade audit have already been shared with the Continuity of Operations Planning Team. So those same standards that we use as part, as part of the performance-based contracting, if approved, would also apply to Sign and Bead Museum in the end. The total cost of the lighting upgrade across the 10 remaining sites would be roughly $1.3 million across those 10 sites. million across those 10 sites. As part of the preliminary assessment, solar was looked at as well. Originally, there was a combination of rooftop, ground mount, and carport solar proposed at Gripstick, FRAC, Civic Center, and the adult center. The top three pictures are all sites at Gripstick. These renderings are based on how much production that was scoped out in the preliminary assessment. The left-middle picture of Gripstick are ground-mounted solar, and the far right is carport solar based on a proposed parking lot in that area at that time. The Civic Center on the bottom left was a combination of rooftop and carport solar, and the bottom middle is Foothills Recreation and Aquatic Center, carport in the parking lot, and some rooftop solar. On the bottom right, the adult center had all rooftop solar during the preliminary assessment. The estimated cost of that project at the time of the preliminary assessment was about $3.3 million with an estimated annual energy savings of $210,000. And that resulted in a 15.5-year simple payback. As we developed the project, we realized that adding solar to the rooftop, adding solar to rooftops at multiple buildings could have a negative impact on our roofing program and make it very difficult to repair potential roof leaks while solar panels are in place. It would also provide an additional shelter for birds to nest. At that point, we decided to move as much solar as we could to carport and ground-mounted solar. The adult center was removed completely because of the roofing program giving birds the additional nesting locations. And the use of the building at the time of the investment grade audit didn't pencil out because it was 50% occupied, and we didn't have that information for the continuity of operations spaces at that time going to the second floor. We can always look at that in the future, but at the time, we removed that because it just didn't pencil out.
Yeah, hold up a sec.
Thank you, Mayor. On the adult center there, as you know, I'm sure we are building out the upstairs and plan to utilize that. And I can appreciate how rooftop solar can have other impacts, but the adult center has a ton of parking lot as well. So I think the potential need is there, and the space to do carport, as you call it, solar is also there. And the benefit then of the carport solar providing covered parking for the patrons is a non-monetary benefit that wouldn't show up in an audit, but I think is worth considering, too. So I hope that we don't scratch it entirely from our plans. If it's just a matter of the timing of it, then that would be useful, I think. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So your estimated conversion costs are because covered parking doesn't exist at FRAC, I know for sure it doesn't exist. So does that include, is that just the solar investment because we'd have to build covered parking? So does this cost include just the solar infrastructure or all the infrastructure?
Councilmembers, Councilmember Tomachoff, this includes everything. This is trenching in the parking lot to install the conduit. This is building the structures. This is putting the parking lot back. This is restriping if needed, removing light poles if needed to build those structures. All that cost is built into this. And I was going to point out, thank you for bringing this up, but I was going to point out those things are cost drivers, and they don't provide energy savings per se or energy production. But it's kind of a necessary evil to have solar in those locations. You have to build the structure. You have to run the conduit back to an electrical room of some sort. You have to meter it. You have to have lights underneath it if it's a carport. So all those things baked into this project is reflected in the cost that you see right there.
Mayor, so I'm trying to understand the reasoning because the parking structures don't exist now. Why would we remove the adult center? And are you intending then to leave the rooftop solar proposed into the Civic Center and FRAC and the solar panels on the parking?
The adult center was removed because the cost of the project outweighed the benefit of it at the time of the investment grade audit. The adult center was 50%, how we would describe 50% occupied only on the first floor. Because this is a pilot program, we can always go back and reassess if solar would work at the adult center, considering it being 100% occupied after the continuity of operations spaces are completed. We can always go back and assess that at that time.
So Mayor, so solar parking structures weren't considered for the adult center based on the occupancy?
Based on the occupancy and from a solar perspective, there's a limit on how much you can produce based on how much you use. So if we produce way more than we actually use, in some instances, we're looked at as a utility company, and then you get taxed different and different type of permits and things of that nature. So at that time, with the building only being 50% occupied on the first floor and much of it is lobby space, it's not really 50% occupied even. Adding that much carport solar in the parking lot, we would be producing significantly more than we actually used.
Okay. One more thing, Mayor. And so the rooftop solar is part of the proposal for the Civic Center and FRAC, though? The bird issue and that other issue is not an issue on these other two locations?
No, we moved everything off the roofs.
Oh, okay, because in the slide, it still shows on the roof, so.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, the rendering slide was from the preliminary assessment, and there wasn't a follow-up slide, and I apologize for that. There wasn't an additional rendering during the investment grade audit. So my apologies for not having a separate rendering. So the scope got changed between the preliminary assessment and the investment grade audit without an additional rendering.
Okay, so, okay, I'm glad I asked because I was confused then. And it's fine, I just want to make sure I understand. So the costs and the savings are based on just parking, solar parking structures on the parking lot at Civic Center and the FRAC? That's it? Okay, thank you.
Mayor, thank you. Moving up the slide to the Gripstick layouts. I'm trying to look at Gripstick on Google Earth at the same time, but it doesn't appear that any of those Gripstick layouts incorporate carport?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, yes, it does. Carport solar at Gripstick would be proposed on the upper right slide.
I'm trying to turn it off. Forgive me, it doesn't look like parking lot to me, but if you say it is, I'll accept it.
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, the parking lot's not there yet. That rendering was based on the drawings that we had from a proposed parking lot at Gripstick at the time. Once the parking lot, we were trying to coordinate all of it together. So once the parking lot's actually built, we would coordinate with the department and the companies that are installing the parking lot and coordinate with them to do the rooftop or the carport solar at the same time or shortly thereafter.
And that, so all of this is parking solar at Gripstick or?
Just on the upper right slide. The other two slides on the upper middle and upper left are ground-mounted solar.
Personally, I'd be interested in seeing more carport, less ground-mounted. We have that parking area that already exists there that doesn't seem to be included in this. We know it's parking lot, probably going to stay parking lot. We don't, I don't want to lose flexibility on other locations on the site because we're putting in ground-mounted now, but as you said earlier, that's kind of in the weeds, so.
And Mayor, Councilmember Turner, I just want to make sure we all are on the same page, too. When you add carport solar, you do lose parking spaces. So the investment grade audit looked at that as well, that you might lose a parking space or two. And we also have to make sure that we still have the same amount of handicap spots that we're supposed to have. So when we looked at it, losing too many parking spaces in the smaller parking lots was not a benefit to the citizens. So it went to ground, or excuse me, to Gripstick. So we went to ground-mounted solar in those areas.
Okay. Mayor, one more question if I could. Generally speaking, is ground-mounted more or less expensive than rooftop?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Turner, generally speaking, less expensive. The structure doesn't have to be as high. It doesn't need to be lights underneath the structures. So generally, less expensive. It all depends on how hard the ground is and other factors that play into that, wherever those ground-mounted solar panels would be. After the audit, the total cost of the solar portion of the project is about $5.3 million with annual energy savings of about $184,000. That comes out to be about a 28.7-year payback. And keep in mind, some of the cost drivers that we talked about, installing the conduit, trenching the parking lot, and putting all that back, the structures and all that play into the cost and the payback of that. Included in the project, just like we talked about earlier, measurement, verification, and those systems that allow us to be more proactive. This system is called PowerEd. This program takes measurement and verification portion and pairs it with educational deliverables. So they'll measure how we're using the building, measure if we make any changes, and then how we use energy and when we use energy, more importantly. They will produce educational pamphlets, marketing material to change our behavior, not as simple as turning the light off when you leave the building, but when to turn your thermostat up or when to turn it down, how you use the building in general, when to open a window, when not, when to open the doors and when not. All those things will be part of the measurement, the verification, the education, all that stuff will be part of this PowerEd system. And over the last 12 years, talking with the vendors and subcontractors, they said PowerEd has saved clients, their clients, a significant amount of money over the last 12 years. So the project totals for pilot project number two, without any capital contributions, is roughly $8.2 million with annual energy savings of about $343,000. That puts us at a 24-year payback. As mentioned earlier, some of these projects were already allocated in our CIP planning. So if we subtract that CIP contribution, we would be asking for roughly $7.8 million that wasn't allocated in CIP, which puts us at about a 22.6-year payback on the additional funding requested. But we wanted to combine the projects in order to paint a full picture on what the total cost was during the preliminary assessment and what the total cost would be after the investment grade audit. The preliminary assessment had a total project cost of about $8 million. The annual energy savings was a little over $527,000. Capital contribution that was already planned in our CIP was about $2.2 million. The estimated project payback would have been about 15 years without using any of our capital dollars and about 11 years with using our capital dollars. Large portion of the capital contribution going down is, like I mentioned, we already did the HVAC replacement at the adult center, or excuse me, at the Advocacy Center, and those dollar amounts came out of that capital contribution. After the investment grade audit, project total did increase, and we discussed many of those cost drivers in the previous slides. The things that need to be done didn't necessarily provide energy savings, the structures for the solar and the strainers and on and on. The overall project cost is a little over $10 million with the annual energy savings of about $479,000. Capital contribution is a little under $2 million. Doing this project without any capital contribution results in a 21-year payback, and with our contribution, around a 17-year payback.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Curious question, how long do solar panels last before they have to be replaced?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Clark, roughly 30 years.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
If the windstorm hits them.
Thank you. So for instance, on slide number, looks like 24, so when we say annual energy savings at $342,777, that's not the, that is each year. That's not the accumulation of the annual savings, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, yes, that is $342, $343,000 annually, every year.
Every year, 342, year two, 342, year three, based on what we have. So one way to look at this would also be to take the conversion cost, the 8.2 million, and amortize that out over a set number of years, either, you know, set number like, say, the 23.9 years of this and see what the, you know, do we, I was about to do the math, but in essence, we're helping pay down the cost of having done the project in the first place each and every year that we're saving this money. And I don't know, I'd have to do the math, but do we get even close to, we probably don't get close to paying for the project through the energy savings, but we certainly reduce the cost of it as another way of looking at it.
I'm sorry, I don't follow, sir. I think we're saying the same thing, Mayor. Members of the council, I think over 22.6 years, we pay for the project with our energy savings.
A little over $7 million a year, I mean, savings.
Good enough for now, but I'll do my math and see if I have more to ask. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So as far as I can recall, we don't have any solar conversion projects in our CIP, right?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Tomachoff, that's correct.
Okay. And so I think the way I understand this, because I had a conversation with somebody who works for McKinstry way back before this thing ever even started, at the last time the league was in Tucson. And basically, do they finance this for us, or how does this exactly work?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachoff, let's get to the financing towards the end of the presentation, once we've covered what the projects would include. I think we get to the end on financing. So there's options we have, and I think in the next couple of slides, we'll get there.
Okay, and then I have another question. Are these audits proprietary, or could we say that, I mean, the much higher dollar amount is a much bigger scale project is with McKinstry rather than mid-whatever-the-other-place is called? But are the audits proprietary? Like if you pursue this project, you have to do it with the company that did the audit? And how is it determined who did which audits? And how is it determined who did which audits?
Mayor, council, Councilmember Tomalchov, before we did, or as part of that initial phase, prior to the investment grade audit, city staff identified buildings that we didn't think we would be doing holistic capital improvements to. So for example, City Hall was taken out of the mix. And then we tried to group like type projects, so libraries were put together and they were assigned to different people and different contractors. So that's how the, the buildings were kind of divided up. And over time, things have changed. We've now are looking at the Civic Center Annex and Bead Museum as part of the continuity of operations spaces. We had to take that into account as part of the investment grade audit. This other part of your question is to whether it's proprietary, because these are investment grade audits where these companies could provide us with financing. In that sense, they become proprietary where the company wants to come in and do their own audit to be able to guarantee that savings. So from that perspective, it would be. So if we ask Midstate right now to complete project number two for us because they have to guarantee the savings, they would go back in and do their own investment grade audit on that.
Mayor, so I'm just curious, how come solar wasn't part of the audit on the first, I mean, because the solar adds quite a bit of cost to the proposals, why there was no solar included in library? I mean, there, because this project number two includes HVAC and solar. So I'm just curious why the higher dollar amount, I mean, and it's no secret that I've had some issues about how this whole McKinstry thing was handled early on. So I'm just curious, how did McKinstry end up with the much higher dollar amount contract proposal than the other company?
Mayor and councilmembers, the, the first project was very heavy in libraries and parks. And the parks made, there was no, because of the requirement where you have to use the electricity that you generate right there, the parks were automatically eliminated from having a good payback from the solar panels. And at the time we started this, the libraries were pretty much close to the public or had very low usage. So they're not included. We did look at solar, and if we were doing this today and could get out and start it, we would look at it. So as part of the pilot project, it wasn't included, but now based upon our electrical consumption, because you got to remember, we did this through 2020, 2021, our baseline electrical at the libraries were low because that was during COVID. If we started today, it'd be different. So we want to get through the pilot and then we can go back and look at adding solar at the libraries. If we started this today, it would definitely be included.
Mayor, I'd like to, FRAC was also not being used and neither was the adult center. So COVID wasn't isolated just to the use of our libraries. So I'm a little bit puzzled by that answer. Thank you.
Mayor and Councilmember Tomalchov, just, that's why now the adult center's been pulled out of solar. It didn't rise that high, but because of FRAC's infrastructure there, it did. So we looked at the electrical consumption as part of that. FRAC's the one that did pencil out of our kind of public facilities that we had. Doing this today, you know, with our plan for the adult center, with now our library usage, solar would make sense at those facilities where they did not when we started this project.
It just seems odd to me that this, the anticipation would be that the libraries would be continued to be closed or restricted use indefinitely and that that wouldn't have been looked at as a temporary thing for the audit. I mean, I imagine they did plenty of audits and looking at buildings that were not being used or used as normal use would be during 2020 and early 2021, but that wasn't going to be an ongoing thing. So I, you know, it just seems a little, a little puzzling to me why that wasn't considered. These projects are, there's a big dollar amount difference between one company and the other, and I personally find that a little bit troubling. Thank you.
Question, if the, if my question can be answered later at the end during the finance piece, I'm okay to wait. So there'll be, if this plan is adopted, there'll be fewer payments to the utilities and there'll be fewer kilowatts used. Who manages those two, specific to these areas of projects? Who's going to manage that? So we know we got our savings.
Mayor, members of the council, Vice Mayor Aldama, that would, that would be field operations. We currently pay all of those electric bills and we watch those on a monthly basis anyway. So part of that measurement and verification that we talked about would be the ability to be able to show what our performance is.
So is it, what is the plan to update the council? If hypothetically this goes through and we're on our way in this, this project, how frequent do we see the reports that how much less we paid in utilities and less kilowatt hours and energy savings?
Mayor, members of the council, Vice Mayor Aldama, we haven't thought that far out yet, to be honest with you. We wanted to get, kind of get through this portion of it and then come back to you, if approved, come back to you with a plan on, a communication plan on how often, how often you would like to see it, how often we can get the reports from the two, from the two vendors and our utility companies.
You were planning on having those reports?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm going to go to Councilmember Mellner in a second. I currently have solar on, on my home and chose to, and chose a company that actually gives me access by computer where I can get immediate reports on what's happening right now. So as far as reports, are we going to have the same type system where we have access to know how much it's producing, how much we're selling back, how much is, I don't know if you're planning on battery storage or not, but will we have access, will you have access to all that in a real time?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, sir. We will have access to that.
So report is, is very, very simple. I mean, if a council member wants to know, you could, you could give them that information in five minutes. Yeah, okay.
Essentially, yes.
Yeah. Councilmember Mellner.
Thank you, Mayor. I am pleased overall with the process in which you went through this to present. I really, being a numbers guy, I kind of really like to see the kind of paybacks on projects that we do. I think I've asked that several times on council. The concern I had is that the payback still seems kind of high to me as far as the number of years for payback. And I say that for a couple of reasons. If we were to analyze this from an investment point of view, from any, any analysis, you'd look at your internal rate of return and based on this number of years requiring to pay back, it seems to me that the internal rate of return would be quite low. I didn't calculate any of that, but it seems like it would be quite low. And so it gives me reason for, to pause, to, is this really the right direction we should be going? The other thing that came to mind was the, there are a lot of new technologies that will probably be coming forward over the next 10, 20, 30 years that may provide energy opportunities. And once we commit to this, we're going to be kind of have that investment in place. Have we considered that at all? And, and again, this is just, you know, kind of an out there question because you don't know that answer, obviously. But I just, when we're investing the amount of money that you're requesting here, it seems like we really need to make sure that, that we're getting a good payback. And the things I've seen in the past, our payback has been very, very good. We've got paybacks in, you know, a few years, paybacks in a half dozen years, but now we're talking a payback of 21 years. Because, and I don't, I don't buy the idea of subtracting the capital contribution as to make the payback years less because no matter what, you still have to do that. It just didn't, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to do that in an analysis to try to make it look better. I may consider, you know, moving this forward, but I do have some reservations about it. I just wanted to express those. Thank you.
Mr. Phelps.
Mayor, members of council, Councilman Mellner, again, I want to restate something, state that the staff said earlier in the presentation, that what we didn't factor into here was repairs, emergency repairs, kind of general maintenance. It was really looking at like for LED, we know that a standard fixture will need a certain amount of, of maintenance and replacement and staff time mobilization to get out and replace a bulb that's down. That really isn't factored into here. It's really a more straightforward approach in terms of knowing, understanding the power consumption and of the new versus the old and calculating the difference. So I think that the rate of return is probably, is conservative because we haven't factored in, if we don't, if we don't make these changes, we are going to increase, you know, other kinds of costs will be factored into there. The other thing that I, I think in government, we have a little bit of an advantage over maybe out of the private sector in, in that we know that for example, we'll take gripstick. It's highly unlikely that we're going to move out of gripstick in 15 years and build a new gripstick. Government, we're able to kind of get our roots down in our facilities and stay long term. If you're a car manufacturing or a, you know, industrial, you may move at some point in time. So you need to really realize those savings on a shorter period of time. So I think a lot of this is the fact that we can, we can accelerate some of these projects. We bring in the expertise of the private sector to help us identify the best approaches going forward. And again, and it still shows a payoff, but it is a little bit different. But I just want to highlight, it doesn't include all of the costs that are being essentially supplanted by upgrading to the newer technology.
Mayor, if I may respond to that, I appreciate that. And I would like to see that because I, I heard that and I kind of maybe didn't pay attention to it because there were no costs associated with that. But I think for me, it would be very beneficial to know what those estimate. Again, you can't estimate exactly, but you can say, well, we're going to save, you know, $10,000 just on this one park without having to do the kind of LED or the light maintenance we would have normally have done. And I think some sort of estimation on that would help the, this entire project and the numbers look much better for me, and I would appreciate seeing those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This doesn't consider though the O and M on solar panels, which are, you know, I mean, you have to, you have to do the maintenance on those to maintain their efficiency. So where does that factor into the calculations also? That they need to be cleaned? It's really, really dusty here. So how does that factor into this, this savings or cost?
Mayor and council, Councilmember Tomalchov, we can't remember off the top of our heads what was included in the cost of the performance base contract and what wasn't. So let us get back to you on that one. Because I know we've got somewhere, how many years was included? I just don't know that right now.
Okay, Mayor, because it says conversion cost. It doesn't show any other cost other than just the actual cost to convert. So there's, there's, especially with solar, there's other costs associated with owning solar panels. And I'd like to know too then, and I know maybe you're going to get to it, is could we adopt, especially because I'm with the adult center not included, could you adopt part of a, an audit and not the whole thing? Say for example, if you wanted to move forward with this, but for now not do the solar? Or do you have to accept the whole audit and do all, everything that's included in the audit? How does that work?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomalchov, I think we're, we're here today to, to get consensus and, and direction. I think we can à la carte, I guess you could, you could say. But just keeping in mind that as you à la carte, your energy savings changes. Because a lot of these things are compounding, right? Like if you do the chiller at a building and the controls at a building and solar at a building, you're, you're almost compounding your energy savings because you're putting one on top of the other. And then maybe you can shed demand during the middle of the day with the solar panels because your chiller isn't running as hard and on and on and on. But if you, if you do just the chiller and we say, no, let's scrap solar right now, then your 17-year payback may turn to a 20-year payback. And additionally, I want to just kind of throw this out there too. We have been kind of having conversations with APS and SRP as of late. And right now, these numbers are based on what we pay for utilities today. The cost of not doing the project would impact us in a different way tomorrow. If, if SRP says we're going to raise, raise our rates across the board 4%, then your payback actually goes down because utility rates are going to go up. And I don't, I don't know if utility rates have ever gone down before.
Okay. But what I'm, what I'm, what I'm having problem with is that the first audit was done without any regard or speculation on adding solar, even though those included chillers, it wasn't considered as part of a necessity, I guess, to the savings. So the reason I brought that up is why wouldn't we then at least just say, well, then go back to the first company and say, what if we, what if, give us an audit on adding solar to the library, both libraries? I mean, obviously, you're not going to add solar to the park, but to both libraries and take another look at that project if, and see what that would look like rather than saying, we're only going to give one of these vendors an opportunity to even evaluate solar in with their project.
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Tomalchov, what we're moving, what we brought forward today was, was a staff recommendation. When we looked at these buildings and this project, this is what we were recommending to do. And when Mr. Thomas gets the next slide, really what we looked at was how do we take the savings from the LED lights, which typically you get most of your energy savings off of and help us fund other projects? And we looked at right sizing and where it made sense. So what we've got today is two investment grade audits that we can move forward with, you know, as staff kind of put these projects together and combining these projects, as we've proposed them today, shows how lights would help finance some others. We get our, our chillers and other improvements done, things that have very low return on investment but are required to be done. And whether we do it through something like this or other ways, will have to be done very, very quickly in the next couple of years. So really, the benefit for us, the city, not us, Charles and I, the benefits for combining these projects is really that one project, one component of it helps pay for the other component. A lot of this coordination does go through these, these contractors. The contractors have a vested interest in this. They are going to come through and commission these projects. They're going to make sure these chillers are running optimal because they are guaranteeing the savings. And the other thing we have in the project is an annual measurement and verification is included. So Vice Mayor, what, what Mr. Thomas was saying earlier was, we don't want to know what frequency you want it. We are going to get an annual audit to measure and verify that our savings are being achieved. So what we've put together is really, is really, this is what staff has come forward with as a recommended list of projects, and this is what we are recommending to council to move forward with as part of our pilot project. We're not saying that solar doesn't make sense at other locations. We're saying that based upon the work we've put into it, this is what we're recommending. And if these go well, let's move forward with other projects as well.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions. I thought I heard you say, so are you suggesting you're going to use solar to run the chillers?
No, no, sir.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor, members of council, no, sir.
Okay, I heard you say that, so I was like, that, yeah, that wouldn't be correct. Okay. So we got that one out of the way. So the savings that you have thus far that you just talked about, really variable, it's going to vary, it's not going to be exactly what you're saying here and what they're promising us. For one reason, and I don't know how you're going to do this, so was that based on the schedule of use you have now for lighting and for cooling? Not necessarily heating here, but cooling? Are we going to do anything to change our schedules, to set temps, mandate them to stay at a variable temp?
Yes.
Because all, if you don't do all that ahead, then this is just not going to make any sense and the true savings aren't really true savings.
Yes. Mayor's member, Mayor, member of the council, council member, or Vice Mayor Aldama, we set that baseline based on the usage of the building at the time of the investment grade audit. We looked at the energy usage in the, in the year that we were doing the investment grade audit, and we went back and got information from SRP and APS on the energy usage prior to COVID. So when we set those baselines, it was based on how the building was being used today. And we use that library as an example. We use council chambers as the example. We use council chambers as the example. And then we looked at, how can we do better from that? Does it, does it mean, that's not part of these projects, but just as an example, does it mean using occupancy sensors instead of a light switch? Does it mean running the chiller, pre-cool in the building before peak demand time in the summer? Turning it on at 4:00 AM when the sun's not beating on the building versus turning it on at 7:00 when it is? All those things go into, go into how you, how we plan that, plan those projects through the investment grade audit. And then we would implement those things and then go back, measure based on the baseline. So I hope, I hope that answers your question.
It, it helps. I want to talk a little bit about the rates as well. There's, it's inevitable, there will be rate increases. And if we don't install now, some of the devices you just talked about, the occupancy sensors, if we don't have them in place now, we do them later and then we get an increase, we're not saving. So these work, these plans work. I've seen them work, but I've also seen them fail. I'm a little, I'm just on the teeter totter here. I'm not sure where I am with this, but I've seen them work. I have, I've seen enough of them work to be somewhat supportive, but I've seen them also fail big time. And it's because we don't calculate correctly and then we don't have the, the sensor devices that, that help control lighting when there's nobody in the space. So you talked a little bit about it. You sound very knowledgeable in it, but I'm just slightly concerned that the calculations aren't just there yet, but we'll continue. We've still got some more to go. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Clark, next.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I share a lot of the comments that Councilmember Mountar made about the real rate of return on investment. But to me, a pilot project is, is you pick out one structure, one building, and you apply every possible energy savings strategy to that building. And you come back and you tell us, this is what really happened. This is what we saved. But what we've got here are six, eight projects that are all labeled pilot projects. I would just like to pick out one building, like the main library, because it needs, what, chillers, it needs lighting. So apply all of your cost-saving measures to that one building and come back and show us what really happened, how much savings we've really generated. Then I would certainly be more comfortable in doing another six buildings. But I would prefer we, we just deal with one and, and that one is really a pilot project. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm going to go to Mr. Phelps next and then Councilmember Tomachov.
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Clark, if you recall, this issue came up in our, in our workshop prior. And there's an issue of scaling. We had to bundle projects to get to a certain amount to make it worthwhile to do the, the expense of the investment audit. So we couldn't just take a single building and get a performance-based contract because there wasn't enough savings to go through all the effort. So what we, what we talked about in our previous workshop is we made, we bundled some light projects to get to what we think would be the minimum amount on this that would be still worthwhile to invest in the investment grade audit. Remember that, you know, we're, be honest, we're really behind most other cities here in the valley with regarding to performance-based contracts. This is a new initiative for us. And so the direction we received from the council was, let's identify a couple of projects, bundle them in a way that doesn't get to be a $40 million project, but, but something that we can manage internally. Let's, let's get the council comfortable with how it works, how we implement this, how we execute on it. And then down the road, as we look at other opportunities, the council then could decide, let's continue to pursue performance-based contracts or to say, you know, they're really not our cup of tea. So this is really coming off of what in our prior workshop, because that was a question, I think it was a good question asked in the prior workshop, is why can't we just do a single project? And, and staff, you know, again, responded that we really had to bundle to get to a certain amount of projects to make it scalable for the investment grade audit.
Okay. I, I guess where I'm having problem is, is that I'm not convinced that the numbers are going to really make the way staff has presented them. I think Councilmember Mountar made a good point about maintenance of old stuff versus new stuff and how much cost saving might be involved there. But then that raises a second question from me, for me. Since we only have a certain amount of money already in the CIP allocated for all of these projects, and it looks like we're going to need another 8 million, where's that 8 million going to come from?
Mayor, members of the council, again, that would be depending on, on the approach of the council. We would then work that into our CIP and we have our budget discussion coming up later this, this winter when we start our budget.
Would the anticipation be that we would put off some other project or projects to satisfy this 8 million?
We would go through a prioritization with the council and it would really be up to the council to decide.
It would be something else.
Let him finish.
I'm sorry, yes.
So yes, so it'd be part of that, part of that. What I would say on your earlier point is, I think if you look at the numbers, let's look at project number one, let's take out the capital, the already what's in the CIP. It says 13.6 years. I think if I were in your chair, what I could say is this is a worst case scenario of a payback is 13.6 years. It likely will be less than that. We'll try to work to get you some additional numbers, but it won't be worse than that. The, the audit guarantees this rate of return. So this is the minimum rate of return that we should expect, but through other circumstances, deferral of things we would have had to repair, et cetera, et cetera, the likely payback will be faster than that, if that helps at all.
Then would it be appropriate for council to give its approval for moving forward with performance-based contracts when we discuss next year's CIP in the spring? And let it compete with other projects and see if there are other projects we're willing to defer to cover the cost of, of this proposal? Could we do that?
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Clark, if we go to slide 27, that, that is what staff is recommending. We keep the 1.9 million, almost 2 million in the CIP. We put in a capital project to cover the remaining portion and it become part of council's prioritization as part of the capital program. And what we were requesting today was council consensus to do that, to do the, once it goes forward in the capital process, then we would come back for formal approval of contracts at a voting meeting. So with council consensus today, you would see the $8 million added to the CIP for council discussion as part of that project.
Okay, just because I'm thick sometimes, I want to be absolutely clear what I'm hearing. Today, if we say yes, move forward, that is contingent upon bringing the $8 million forward during our budget process and discussion of the CIP and council making a decision at that time whether we want to move forward with the 8 million. Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
So, so put it another way, if we say yes today, does that bake in the 8 million into the CIP for 2024?
Mayor and councilmembers, the, the capital program is, is your program. It would give staff the authorization to put that project in the CIP and then council gets to prioritize if it stays in the CIP or if it comes out, if there's other priorities. We're asking for consensus today to put in a project in the, in the CIP that would say performance-based contracts. We would take the 1.9 million dollars that's in the CIP, out of the existing projects, move it into that one and program in an additional 8 million dollars.
If I might continue, Mayor. So what I'm hearing is, if we give consensus to move forward today, that 8 million will automatically go into the CIP. And at that point, we will have to prioritize what other projects we're willing to push off to cover that 8 million, correct? Is that what I'm hearing? I want absolute certainty about this.
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, the only reason I'm giving you some uncertainties, I don't know if push off projects, it's council's priority. We would put that project in. And if other projects then would have to be pushed out? I don't know that. I haven't looked at the full CIP.
It's not in there now, so.
Mayor.
Mayor, I.
Yeah, I, I put her, hold on, I put her off. Let me go.
Yeah, because she answered my question and I never got to ask a follow-up. Thank you, Mayor. So I want to go back to when I, when you, you said that we didn't want to take a look at the chillers without taking a look at solar, which is exactly what we were, what you did or what we received on the first performance-based audit from the company that was at McKinstry. I can't remember what its name was. And so what I was, what I was saying is, I mean, I don't know that we're really, even really ready to move forward with solar, period. And, you know, I mean, as Councilmember Mountar said, there's a lot of other technologies. There's, I mean, it's an ever-evolving landscape of, of, you know, utility. I mean, solar is, works well in Arizona. But can, could we move forward with actually more equal projects rather than 8.2 million to McKinstry and 1.8 million to the other company and take the almost $6 million out of it for solar and leave that for another conversation? Or is this proposal, do you have to implement their entire proposal in order to move forward? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Tomachov, we have investment grade audits from each of these companies. So based upon the way we put them together, we would either take it and accept it or start over. It's as is.
Okay, so I'm still not understanding why you didn't have the first company do solar then, other than the fact that, I mean, there was quite a bit of controversy, quite a bit written about this whole McKinstry thing. So this whole thing makes me uncomfortable that there's such a disparity in between the dollar amounts of both of these, these proposals. So, and if you're looking for consensus, at least for me today, to, this eight, almost $9 million is not in the CIP right now. So obviously something that's in there now is going to have to be repositioned somehow in order to make this work. And I'm not willing to do that today. These, these two proposals, we were, we were told we were going to, I thought, get two similar proposals from both companies and there's a big dollar amount difference. And one company was asked to propose a much higher cost contract than the other, and I'm not comfortable with it today. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, so Councilmember Clark, so again, what we normally do is, you know, we have a draft CIP that the staff is required to present to the council. So if consensus were being here, you would show everything within the amount we're going to fund in this, proposed funding in this CIP, and it would be a project that would be there. But we will also have a line of items that are in second year, the third year, fourth and fifth year. And then if you wanted, you could say, no, we really want to move something up from the second year funding into the first year and get rid of performance-based contracts. You can, you can be able to do that. I guess I do want to say, I probably needed to do this at the beginning of the presentation, but since it continually gets brought up by Councilmember Tomachov, is I want to remind the council that my son, my stepson, three and a half years ago worked for McKinstry in Minneapolis. It has nothing to do with the local Arizona. He no longer works for that, he works for that company now in, in the Seattle area, the headquarters area. So he's been with them for approximately three, three and a half years. So I always said we would disclose this to the council member. That's the controversy, I guess, is that, is that I hadn't disclosed during the initial workshop that my son, my stepson worked in Seattle for the same company that was being proposed here in Arizona. So that, that was the, that was the item.
Mayor, if I might?
Go ahead.
I think what I would be comfortable with, with regard to this next upcoming CIP, is that it be presented to us as it exists at this time. And projects such as this be listed as supplemental or ask projects that would like to go into the current CIP. And then let us decide whether we want to even consider doing that and replacing or pushing back other things. But I don't want to automatically put it into the 2024 CIP because it wasn't approved and it's not been approved and it won't be approved until next budget year. I would be more than happy to consider it, but not as a done deal within the current CIP proposal, only as a supplemental add-on.
Mayor?
Hold on. Make sure he's.
No, no consensus today on this item. Would that mean that these, this equipment that we're needing specifically, more specific to the chiller, chillers? If we didn't give consensus today, you don't have authority to replace our chillers? Is that correct?
Mayor, members of the council, council, or Vice Mayor Adama, no, no, sir. That is not correct.
We're doing it anyway. We're just, we're talking about the, the payback, the savings.
Yes.
Mayor, thank you. So a couple of things I don't understand. And one is that why we consider, and I think this may have been what Councilmember Tomachov was raising too, is why at Foothills Library, we can, we're considering replacing the chiller equipment, but we're not considering adding into it the solar opportunity that was described as being essential on a different project to make it work out. I will say too that, well, I'll save that for third. Secondly, it sounds like based on Councilmember Clark's math, that we're, we will, so I'm confident we have a perfectly thought-out and sufficient capital improvement plan, multi-year plan currently. If we adopt this concept today, we are either accelerating or enhancing projects within that plan at a cost of 8 to 9 million dollars, which means 8 to 9 million dollars is going to come from somewhere else, whether it be out of capital, future capital programs, or whether it be out of other things that we could do for our residents with that 8 or 9 million dollars. And we're considering this in a vacuum rather than as part of the whole picture of what we and our residents' vision for the city. So that concerns me and that's why I won't have, you won't have my consensus on this today. And then to the McKinstry issue, I would just say it's a little bit more complicated and that still gives me reservations about going farther down this road. Thank you.
Do you have anything else to add?
Sir, I, I just wanted, the intent of the, of the presentation today, I can't really speak to, I wasn't here when all the McKinstry and mid-state stuff started. But looking at the scope of work when I got here, it looked like the mid-state portion of it was very parks and library heavy. And I don't, I don't think you can add solar at a park. And then additionally, once you move the solar to the ground-mounted and the parking lot solar, then you run into losing parking lot spaces at a library. So again, I just, I just wanted to make sure that we, we get some sort of direction today. And I just wanted to be clear that this, the McKinstry and mid-state items are new information to, to me, so.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say that you're very smart, very intelligent, and you have a lot of knowledge and a lot of expertise. And I don't want you to, to feel that, that we are discounting your presentation. You did an excellent presentation, okay? So please, keep that in mind. My concern is with supplanting something in the CIP without benefit of looking at the entire CIP at budget time and deciding if I'm willing to supplant 8 million dollars in the current CIP with this project. I think the project as merit, I understand the need to bundle things. I would probably pick one or two buildings and bundle. I don't know if I'd pick six, but, so it's not that, that I'm opposed to what you're proposing. I'm just nervous as a cat on a hot tin roof about the CIP and what will have to be, what will have to go or be pushed back. what will have to be, what will have to go or be pushed back to accommodate this. And I want it to be as meritorious as something else that, to be, to be worthy of supplanting something else within the CIP. But you did a good job, so I want you to know that.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, question, just, I think it's really complex, and so citizens need to know. And then I have a question with regard to McKinstry. What exactly is McKinstry going to do? What is their service to us that we're paying, and what are we paying them?
Mayor, members of the council, council, or Vice Mayor, McDinstry would do exactly what mid-state would do. And it starts by the study, it starts by the investment-grade audit. From the investment-grade audit, they would plan how, look at how we're using our energy now, and look at what can we do to reduce that. Study what type of equipment would achieve those goals, and then start to draft a plan. That's, that's where we were at in the investment-grade audit. Once that plan was approved, reviewed by field operations, discussed with council, if we were to move forward, then McKinstry and mid-state would procure all those items. They would manage those projects. All the insurance and liability of all those projects go through mid-state and, excuse me, mid-state and McKinstry. They would commission those items. They would make sure that everything runs well. We would do the punch list and make sure that we accept that work. And then that's just the beginning of it. Once the, the equipment and all the projects are completed and commissioned, then we would, we would start the measurement and verification process, right? We would look at the energy bills together. We would review APS. We would review SRP. We would look at our dashboards. We would share those dashboards. We would get that educational information from them on how we use the buildings internally and what we, what can we do to do it, to do it better. And then after we take those measures, then we would look at it again and share that information again. So it's, it's not, you know, a simple project. It's a very complex project. But mid-state and McKinstry would do the same services for us essentially, just different projects.
Thank you. Very complex. They're not just consulting. They're actually procuring subcontractors, programming it all, and getting installed, getting the contractors for labor. So I'm, thank you for that. And then you may, may not have been around for the McKinstry issue. Did we approve this back in '21? Or we, was it a different process that McKinstry is now procured for this, or will be procured for?
Mayor, councilmembers, we received consensus in March of '21, and we came back to a formal meeting to approve the contract with McKinstry, such that they could do the investment-grade audit. That was approved, I believe, in June of '21.
Okay, so I'm not going to get into the McKinstry issue. The city manager just said in public what the concern was then. But just want, for those who are concerned as citizens, this is the same McKinstry. This is the same company that was in question then, that's, that might get consensus today to continue that work. I just want everybody to know, like, this isn't a new McKinstry. This is the same group that there was an issue with. Just want to be sure, I want to be just out there and open. It's not a new McKinstry. People have gone on, they might have, but same group, same issue, may or may not be there, but same McKinstry. Okay, thank you.
So, thank you, Mayor. So does this, I mean, what, what, what would the harm be in waiting and, and building, baking this into the CIP rather than blindly saying, we're gonna, we're gonna have to change the CIP as it exists right now? I don't understand if you tell both of these contractors that we're gonna see how this fits into our CIP, and we'll let you know. I mean, why do we have to decide today, is what I'm trying to understand?
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Tomachoff, I think we were just trying to discuss if there was a difference. I think we would, we're proposing we add this in. And this is how we said we would add it in, is to use the current funding that we've got, program in the $8 million. And I don't know, I'd have to talk to Ms. Rios and Mr. Gibson as to how that happens in the CIP. But this is what we wanted to do is.
But you're asking us to make changes to the CIP, but we don't know what changes we're going to be having to make. So, you know, I mean, I, I agree with Councilmember Clark that, I mean, I'm willing to consider this. I do think the solar, the fact that both companies weren't given the opportunity to propose solar bothers me. I mean, and I have all of the discovery emails. I've read every single email about, I know who set up the meetings in Seattle. I know exactly what transpired, and that's why I'm disturbed by it. I don't want to keep going there. But what I'm saying is, looking at what I'm looking at right now, it doesn't look like both opportunities, both companies were given equal opportunity for a similar scope of work. They weren't, because one has got a lot, almost $6 million of solar and one doesn't. So I'm not saying no to that, but I, it does bother me. But I just don't understand why you're saying staff has to do, you know, whatever they have to do for the CIP, but we're supposed to decide blindly without knowing what we're really deciding, because we don't have any way of knowing what we're deciding until we get to the CIP. Something is going to have to be moved around somewhere. So I just don't understand. Forget about staff. If you go back to McKinstry and mid, mid-state, is that, if you go back to them and say, council wants to wait until, present this as, as a supplemental, or, or we can, I know that, that they gave us the, the tool in the CIP where you could move things around. And I know Ms. Rios, I think, built that tool in where you can plug something in and, and you can move things around to make it all, all the numbers work. Why couldn't we put this as one of the things that we plug in and move things around to see, what do we have to bump back another year, or what do we have to, you know, I mean, costs, first of all, our CIP is going to be probably tricky too because of inflation. There's probably a lot of stuff in there right now that we thought we could afford that we can't afford now. So I don't want to be making any commitments where we may have $8 million more of cost of something that we really need to do in the CIP because of the inflated costs of what, what we're dealing with everywhere. So I just don't understand why both contractors wouldn't say, yeah, we'll sit tight and wait and see where this fits into the CIP. So we have a real understanding of what it is we're committing to.
Would you like to respond?
If I may add.
Please.
So, Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachoff, I, I think we just wanted to come here today to show you the numbers. Obviously, we wanted to get consensus. But to answer your question and to piggyback off of Ms. Wataneko, I think that the, the challenge is that there's a time value of money that we have conversations about where we could be asking for $8 million today. And if we decide that it's a valid project, and it sounds like, you know, most of you guys do think it is a valid project, if we don't decide to do it today, we may be coming back to you next year and asking for 9 million or 10 million, all while utility rates go up at the same time. So I'm, I'm not going to be the gentleman sitting here telling you that you have to make a decision today. But it just, it just is one of those things to consider. Today, we're asking roughly $8 million. Tomorrow, with fuel prices and, and the way the markets are, who knows what we'll be asking for tomorrow.
That's also going to affect current projects in the CIP, which is also our concern.
Mayor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to wrap this up. Go ahead.
Okay, because this will wrap up my position. I am not willing to move forward and automatically place this in the CIP, knowing that I don't know what it is we're prepared to ship backwards or eliminate to accommodate this project. I am more than willing to support this project and let it compete with everything else in the CIP at our spring budget discussion. But, but if your consensus means that you want me to automatically place this in the CIP now, I will not do it. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Phelps.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council. Again, I want to highlight just real quickly the term pilot project, which is what the direction was given at the prior workshop, is to say, we want, the council said, we want to get our feet wet. We don't want to do it on gigantic level. We want to do it on a manageable level. So we identified at the workshop both groupings of projects and who would be getting the performance-based contract. I want to remind you that including carryover from 2021, our current-year CIP is $287 million. I want to repeat that. We're to, our current CIP with carryovers, $287 million. We're talking about an $8 million pilot project. That, what we want to do is begin the process. The audits are time-bound, because what happens is, remember, they're contractually guaranteeing us the savings by implementing this project. We already know what's happened with supply chain issues and other, other costs that are going up. So we can't go back to them three years from now and say, all right, we're ready to do the performance-based contract, because the entire environment has changed. So we don't have to do performance-based contracts. But at some point, what we thought the staff or council had given indication to us was, come back with a manageable project, identify what those savings are, and then bring it back to the council for, for direction. The last thing I want to say is, going back to that $287 million capital figure, our single biggest challenge in the city of Glendale is having the staff and the resources to implement such a robust capital investment project program. And so one of the advantages of performance-based contracts is, is it gives us an opportunity to engage with the private sector, and they add us capacity in to deliver projects that are there. If the council, you know, doesn't feel like we want to do LED lighting upgrades and those other things, we can always figure out a way to make those happen. This was designed to bring a partner in who guarantee our savings, identify what the costs are, be a partner with us in terms of how we manage the systems and manage our facilities, and then see how it works, report back to the council on a regular basis, and see if down the road you want to go for it. So again, it's, it, we can manage this without taking away from the priorities in our CIP.
Mayor. Thank you. There, there is, so, look, I, I believe in performance-based contracts. You already said that. I know they work and there's some that fail, but, oh, well. There is no certainty on which project we're going to have to move out of the CIP. Could be Councilmember Clark's, could be mine, could be Tomachoff's. None of us are selfish. We know we have to move them. It could be a project in, in Councilmember Tomachoff's area that I, I'm supportive of. And there's no clarity. I don't know. There's no certainty at all. Here's what I'm proposing, if the council will, will allow it and accept it. And look, the McKinstry thing, that's passed us. If it was a new contract today, starting today, that issue's gone. So I'm not even going to talk about that anymore. I, I am requesting that we table this item three, four weeks. It's not a lot, loss of time. Come back, give us some more clarity, some more certainty on which project and how we're going to prioritize it. I know the city manager may not be comfortable with that, but I think it gives us time and you time to come back to us with more clarity, more certainty, which projects are going to move. Because I'll tell you what, it's already a challenge in getting projects through CIP from all of us. Now we know we have to cut them, just a matter of which one we're going to cut. So I'd like to table this issue for three to four weeks.
Mayor.
Hold on. One of the things that I know that leadership has been able to do a very good job of is pull rabbits out of their hats. I mean, there's no doubt in the past, city manager Vicki, the whole group, has been able to find money when they really start looking hard. I would hope that if the decision is made to hold this off for the next three, four weeks, that if you have the time, if you have the ability, look and try to find some opportunities that maybe we can salvage this and let the council know exactly the priorities of where those things are. That would be my request.
Mayor, and just to be clear, my concern is, is that the $237 million that Mr. Phelps mentioned is currently in our CIP, that, that, all of that is subject to inflation. So the cost of those projects could be another 20 or 30 million dollars higher than we're anticipating when we put them in the CIP. So this really could be, I mean, I just, I'm fine with waiting a few weeks, but we also have to understand, you're talking about, well, it could be more later. Well, everything in the CIP could be more later too, not just this. And so we're saying we're going to fit this $8 million in when there might be critical things in the CIP that have increased because of inflation, that we're now going to be, having to be moving stuff all over the place. So this is going to be tricky with the CIP this year because of inflation and the current, the economy that we're living in. And I don't want to short, short us in something that we probably really need to do, or something that we really want to kind of try dip our toe in and see if we want to do these performance-based contracts. I understand, I like the concept. When I first met the gentleman from McKinstry, I was really excited about the stuff he was telling me. I didn't know that these conversations had been happening for months and that there was a trip planned within just a few days of that. I think it's a really good way to get things done. It's just committing right now with not knowing where we are with the CIP and what the increase in project costs that are immediate needs for the city. I can't commit to it right now myself.
Yeah, I do have one other question. It was asked earlier on, was there different financial opportunities as far as financing or, and I don't know who that question should be addressed to, whether that's Vicki?
Mayor, members of the council, the financing piece, the investment-grade audit would go to a bank of sorts. The companies themselves do not provide financing to us. They will partner, because they have to have some, some space in between them and the bank. So they would provide that investment-grade audit to a financier, a finance company. And the finance company would make sure that they're a credible source. They would study the investment-grade audit, and then they would, and then they would say, hey, this is low risk for me, moderate risk for me. So here's what your financing is and what your interest rate is. We discuss that upfront, but then you start, then you're talking about putting interest on top, on top of the $8 million that we're talking about now. So funding it ourselves looked like a more fiscally responsible option than to be paying interest on top of the things that we're already, that we're already talking about today.
Mayor, can I add some clarity?
Please.
So one option is to use the investment-grade audit to go to commercial lending. We could also issue bonds for projects, and we could also use, you know, cash to do it. So there's a variety of ways you can fund it. It would really be, you know, basically, we'll come back, would come back with a recommendation on the best way to accomplish that. But there's multiple ways that you can fund these.
Mayor, I have a question. Just need more information. So as has been mentioned, that when, when a entity goes down this path with, then the savings are guaranteed by the contractor you're working with. If they're, the energy savings, so the cost, what if the cost of the project is significantly, I mean, is, what if the savings on the project itself are big? Because I, you know, I've heard concerns here about inflation, but there's plenty of people in the market that are concerned about recession as well. So if we're, if this is the price we're agreeing today to pay for these projects, and in a year or two, we're in a recession, and the private sector's pulled out of construction, and everything's much more competitive, and already material rates have returned back to, a lot of them have returned back to pre-COVID prices, I'm told, are we, would we still be bound for the higher contract price to do these projects in the first place?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Turner, we, we would be bound to what the, whatever the contract is. We would go, if, if we got consensus today, we would go back to the, back to the vendors and get a contract for a voting session and the final cost of that project. So again, some of these, some of these numbers are 30, 60, 90 days old. We would get updated costs from today and go, those numbers will go into the contract. And then that's what we would be, that's what we would be bound to.
Well, for the other reasons we've discussed, including the opportunity cost of eight, nine million dollars, that's unknown to us, and, and the volatility of the whole market at this point, construction-wise, I'm.
construction-wise, I'm, I'm still not there. Thank you.
Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. I'm in favor of the performance-based contracts. I know everybody's cautious about what's going to happen. I see it's probably not a consensus of doing things today, but I'm in favor of it. I know we have work that needs to be done, and acquiring the savings at the same time, I think it's a great idea, and I hope the council will move forward with it shortly. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so is there a consensus to bring this back in three or four weeks?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. Okay. So it's my understanding, because this took a ridiculous amount of time, and I'm not saying it's ridiculous, it's just a lot of time, we're going to skip items three and four?
Two and three, yeah.
Two and three, okay, I'm sorry. So we'll catch those in our next one. So Ms. Bauer, if you could go to item four for us.
Council, item of special interest on circular drives.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report on item number four will be Rick St. John, deputy city manager.
What, what is item four?
Circular drives. Parking on.
Is he here?
I don't think it's a...
You wanted to go ahead and catch, oh, he's here, okay.
Just to get permission to bring it back.
I'll be right back.
circular drives. Apologies. Apologies, I held it as much as I could. Thought I had a few minutes. This is in response to Councilmember Turner's council item of special interest on circular drives and not allowing the parking on circular drives in residentially zoned lots. So that would be R1-4 properties to R1-10 properties, anything with an R1 designation. It would not include any SR property or any A1 designated property. What I'm seeking today is consensus from the council to have staff do the work to determine the impact of that for a future discussion and workshop. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
So what does the code say right now as far as circular drives? Because of all this parking thing, I just, I get so confused on these.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, it does allow for parking on circular drives, provided that the circular drive does not exceed either 40 or 50% of the total parking space for the front yard. Parking and maneuvering, I should say.
And, okay, Vice Mayor, and so the proposal would be to not allow parking, only just to allow loading and unloading?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, that's correct. It would, it would have the effect of allowing maneuvering on circle drives and extreme temporary, so parking to offload groceries or something of that nature, but not to be parked on.
Like a party, if you had a bunch of people and they didn't want to, you know, they have enough room to park six or eight cars in your circular driveway.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, that would be at council's discretion to carve out exceptions.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Clark?
I'm, I'm willing to move this item forward for further discussion, and I think part of that further discussion would satisfy some of the questions that Councilmember Tomachoff has.
Yeah, and to save time today, this is just consensus for Mr. St. John to go back studying, come back to us. Today wouldn't be the appropriate day to ask all those questions. Do we have consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes, you have consensus. Is that it for you?
I have one more, but I believe I'm after Mr. Phelps. I'm not sure.
So I don't think so.
Item number five?
Downtown Campus Reinvestment Project, update number five.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, here to give you our monthly update on the Downtown Campus Reinvestment Project, which continues to occupy a tremendous amount of time and energy from the staff. I would like to walk you through just some items on the PowerPoint that we've created here. First of all, what you'll notice under the overall continuity of operations for the six buildings that we're currently involved with, is you will see that planning is essentially complete, except for the media center, which is well under its way. Design is underway, all of the buildings either completed or underway, except for the media center. We have five of the buildings under, excuse me, four of the buildings under construction. Noteworthy is the move-in dates that we're showing you there. They may be impacted by the department's ability to move in within that timeframe, so we've given them the ability to move out a little bit later, for example, in the case of budget and finance, due to some closing out of the year and just some of the internal operations. But as, the one thing I want to say is that our goal is still to have all departments moved out of their existing space no later than June of '23, and we're still on schedule for that. Since our last time, we showed you the same building, which is moving along well, and I want to notice, notice up in the upper left-hand corner, our stoplight there really is to give you an indication of the three areas, budget, scope, and schedule. And green, yellow, and red would be the indicators there, and if the yellow would be something we have caution. So for example, if we felt we weren't going to make our targeted schedule, you would see the bottom light be yellow. But right now, all of our projects and our continuity of operation, everything is green solid, as you'll see from every slide coming up. The same building, we're starting to do drywall. Sprinkler has been 90% complete. We're waiting some storefront, aluminum storefronts for the different offices, but it's well on its way. Again, I mentioned the media center. We're, we're still doing our space planning and some kind of furniture testing, but that is going as well. Vanna needs to move that along. The adult center, the permits have been issued for construction. The revised scheduled date for construction will start early November, so we're just several weeks away from the start of that, and we still see substantial completion somewhere in late February, early, early March, which is fairly aggressive, but that's the indication going forward. Gripstick, we're halfway through construction. You can see a picture here. This is an updated picture. You can see the modifications to HVAC, ductwork, the sheet rock. Electrical's been pulled and been roughed in, so that's moving along. And again, we still expect the Gripstick project to be essentially completed by the end of November. So again, a lot of activity. Airport is now 100% complete, and, and the only, what we're wording on are some workstations. We did pull workstations from the arena. This was, some of the workstations were in the space occupied by the former tenant, the hockey team, and they, we were able to repurpose those and use them here, here at the airport. The Bead Museum, we're currently at about 50% complete on design, moving forward there. We'll, we'll be working on gutting of the Bead Museum, would be the next part, and there's still some HVAC and infrastructure work that will need to be completed. Same thing on the, again, on the annex. Everything is moving forward. With, with that, design documents are now 50% complete. Again, we're right now, we're about 85% complete on all of our programming efforts with our, with our design team, and our first community engagement is coming up around the corner on October 26th. So we've been out promoting that heavily, and we appreciate all the council. I know a number of you have included this in your newsletter going out to your constituents, and we're looking forward to receiving input from our community on this project on the So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any data on how well we're remaining on budget? We just had a big conversation about the urgency to move forward with the performance-based contract due to cost increases. So what kind of cost increases are we seeing so far? And I know that $70 million overall number was, it's probably about a year old, so is that being recalculated, or are we going to, are we going to stay within the $70 million? It's a, it's a tricky time to be trying to do something like this.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachoff, again, with regards to the continuity of operations plan, everything is tracking within budget, which is what the indicator I had mentioned. We have not, the, the design team is working on updated numbers. Our first look at those will be coming up, I believe, what, a couple of weeks?
Thirty.
Yeah, we're about two weeks away from, from Oakland construction, giving us kind of the first real look at some of the different items that we feel will be part of the project, and we'll certainly update the council when we have that information.
Thank you.
No other question? I guess at this point, we're, we're finished with that. You don't need anything?
Correct.
Okay. I would ask that we go backwards and at least catch the misdemeanor repeat offender program. Those two went really quick, so I'd sure like to get this one done, mainly because I did a ride-along on Saturday night and then talked with several officers, and I got some, I thought, pretty good feedback from the police officers that this is going to affect.
I'll read that.
Informational update on the police department's misdemeanor repeat offender program.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report will be Deputy City Manager Rick St. John and Glendale Police Chief Chris Briggs.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. I'm trying to figure out how to get the PowerPoint presentation up on the screen. There it is. So this is just an informational update to the council on a misdemeanor repeat offender program that's been studied by the Glendale Police Department, members of Chief Briggs' team. This, this program does exist in Phoenix and Peoria. Those are the programs that we studied. We talked extensively with both of those cities and the people running and managing those programs. And Chief Briggs and his team developed, after studying those programs, developed a program that we believe will work best for the city of Glendale. And today, we're just here to provide information on that. Some statistics to talk about. In calendar year 2020, we had over 13,000 misdemeanor incidents reported to the police department. In calendar year '21, that number went up to little over 14,100, just under 14,200, an increase of 890 reports. In that same calendar year, 2021, 160 who committed, there were 160 repeat offenders who committed three or more misdemeanor offenses, and you can see how they're listed out there. We had one offender commit nine misdemeanor crimes in 2021. Those 160 offenders were responsible for 591 of the total crime reports. That's 4% of our total reporting. But more important than that, they accounted for 24.7% of all of our misdemeanor arrests. So nearly 25%, one quarter of all of our misdemeanor arrests were attributed to these 595 repeat offenders, indicating that a program to deal with repeat offenders would likely be very helpful for the police department and our community. The goal of the misdemeanor repeat offender program is to reduce calls for service, which allows officers more time to be proactive in the field. Obviously, reducing recidivism is a primary goal, using mandated services and plea agreements, and we'll talk more about that as we talk about the misdemeanor repeat offender process and, and what the police department will do in conjunction with the prosecutor's office, and better utilize diversion programs for the mentally ill and people experiencing substance misuse issues. So our process, on a daily basis, the records management system called Premier One from Motorola, will run a back-end report. So it's an automated report, it doesn't need to be touched on a daily basis, it just automatically runs, and it tells the police department if someone was arrested who had four or more arrests in a 12-month period. The police department has designated officers that are working the MROP program. They will receive that daily report, and if there are any offenders that are, that have had their fourth or more misdemeanor arrest in that 12-month period, then they are considered qualifying for the misdemeanor repeat offender program. That officer will contact a contracted navigator and the prosecutor's office. The navigator then takes the lead and does the interview of the offender to assess service and case management needs. So if the person has a substance misuse issue or they are mentally ill, that will be identified by the navigator, and a plea agreement with the prosecutor's office can be built to provide, to encourage that offender into those services. To continue with the process, the MROP officer navigator and prosecutor determine if a plea will include those mandated services, and if so, the plea agreement is presented to the offender, who can then accept the plea or proceed with trial. If the offender accepts the plea, the case is handed off to the appropriate case manager. The case manager works with the court and the offender to ensure compliance. So the case manager is the one who has the daily or sometimes weekly interaction with the offender to make sure they're staying on track and doing the things that they need to do according to the plea agreement. If the offender is ultimately non-compliant, they just don't do what they've said they would do in the plea agreement, then the case goes back in front of the prosecutor, who will petition the court to revoke the plea agreement, and will bring the offender back in for resentencing. The goal is to get the offender away from an opportunity to commit more crime for a period of up to 30 to even 60 days. So if they go into services, typically those services last 30 to 60 days, and they don't have opportunity to commit crime in the city. If they don't accept the plea, there's an enhanced sentencing, and they could be jailed for up to 30 days, which would eliminate their ability to commit more crime in the city. And with that, I think that concludes the presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
I've got one question and one statement. My question, this is on violations in the city of Glendale only, correct?
Mayor, that is correct. Currently, we're looking at violations that occur in the city of Glendale, but because Peoria and Phoenix have misdemeanor repeat offender programs, we will likely begin discussing with them, combining. And so if an offender commits two crimes in Peoria, two crimes in Phoenix, and then a crime in Glendale, we may consider, I'm not saying we're going to, but we may consider that a fifth offense and bring them into the misdemeanor repeat offender program.
So it's possible, by partnering with the other two cities, that those violations could actually increase, because we don't know right now, or we're not paying attention if they have violations in other cities. So that potentially could come up.
Mayor, yes.
And, so that was my question, my statement. I did a ride-along Saturday night. It ended up being very, very late. I did get a chance to talk with several officers, and Chief, I think you might appreciate this, the officers love this idea. They absolutely love it. I talked with several of them that said that they would arrest somebody, and a week later, they were arresting the same person all over again. And there's a point where arresting's not working. You need to start working with people to try to fix the problem. The officers seem to really enjoy that fact that, that here is now a tool that they can use to start solving some of these problems. So for the rest of the council, I can tell you, what I heard from the officers is they really enjoyed the thought of this, so, question?
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you, Mayor. So will this probably cause a need for an increase in the prisoner maintenance fund? Will we be arresting more people, or?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, we do anticipate an increase in the need for jail billing funds, and that's in part due to several different things. This program alone could have that impact, but according to Peoria and Phoenix, who we've spoken to, I don't think they've seen a long-term increase. Maybe on the short term, they had an increase, but then as the program developed and people understood it better, the offenders understood it better, I don't know that it had a permanent increase was affixed.
Okay. And I mean, I know we've all, we've talked about the arrest, release, repeat. I mean, it's a hamster wheel. The people just keep cycling through, and, you know, we see them everywhere continuing the same behavior, so I'm glad we're moving towards trying to do something about it. But how does this affect, I mean, I know from conversations I've had with other, other cities even, is that there's a, there's a bottleneck with county for getting people booked. So, and I know this doesn't do anything about that, but it does, I mean, when you take people down there, it's hours, from what I understand, sitting down there trying to get people booked down at county.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, that is correct. There are some agencies that are waiting upwards of six hours to just get in the door to process people. East Valley, West Valley chiefs have been in conversations with Sheriff Enzone about this. In two weeks, the West Valley chiefs will be meeting with the chief deputy to discuss some ideas that they have to speed up the process. And then we, the West Valley chiefs, are looking at a very innovative alternative to this, but it's way too early to...
But it's way too early to get into that right now because we're in the infancy stages. But it is a correct statement. It will increase wait times if we're booking more people. But that doesn't outweigh the positive of what this program can do. And ultimately, we want to give services to people so they don't have to commit the crimes. That's what we're looking to do, is stop the crime. But if someone isn't willing to follow through with the services or willing to be part of that process, then we're hopeful that the prosecutor and the court will do some enhanced sentencing, because maybe that will then change the behavior.
I'm, thank you, Mayor, I'm glad, and thank you, Chief. I'm glad to hear those conversations are happening because I've heard from some of my colleagues in other cities that, you know, I mean, we don't have the resources to have people waiting around down there to get people booked. And, I mean, I'm all for that. You know, we do a good job, and our community services team does a good job in offering services and resources to people that want them. The fact of the matter is, not everybody wants them. And, you know, as a representative of the people, at least, and that elected, we don't have to accept the lawlessness in our community. We have to start finding ways to do something about it. Of the people that refuse to try to stay within the law and live in society. I mean, I just was talking to one of our planning commissioners, was looking out over the breezeway here in between the planning workshop and the planning commission meeting, and people are openly shooting up in the park. I mean, they're just not afraid of being punished for doing the things that they're doing anymore. So I think this is a really good step in the right direction to let people know that, you know, in Glendale, we're going to enforce the law. And you're not, you can't continue to commit crimes and be in the hamster wheel. Eventually, you're going to, you're going to, you're going to be prosecuted for it. So I'm glad to hear it.
Councilmember Melner.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure I understand what the program is, because I'm, you know, I've been reading through the program. And I just want to get, how do you give me an example of what, how this would help reduce crime or help an individual get out of the crime cycle? If you can provide an example of a make-believe person that can go through this process and how it would help?
Certainly. Mayor, Councilmember Melner. You have an individual who has a drug problem. And as a result of that drug problem, they're committing petty thefts, shoplifting to survive, to sell, so that they can buy drugs. It's an ongoing thing, they're getting arrested for it continuously. We recognize that that is maybe a core issue as to why they're doing this. That's through the interview with the navigator. So we offer them substance abuse counseling that they're, through the diversion process, they're mandated to go to in order to not be sentenced. If they're successful, then they're successful, and that's part of the plea. They've, they've met their commitment. If they are not successful, they don't go, they blow it off, and they continue to commit crimes, then the Police Department will bring them back to the prosecutor. Prosecutor will ask the judge for enhanced sentencing and lay out the foundation as to why.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor. Gentlemen, my question was probably just now touched on, but what are the more common types of offenses that would get an offender into this program?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, again, it'd be misdemeanors, petty theft. It could be criminal damage. So you have an adult, I call them juveniles, but an adult 18 or older that can be seen in our court. Maybe they're tagging. And we find out that they come from a broken home, and they don't have any structure or mentorism or mentoring in their life. Maybe that's a service that can be provided to them, get them back on the straight and narrow. Shoplifting is a big one. We have a lot of shoplifting in our city. Takes officers off the street. Obviously, it causes prices to go up. It's, shoplifting is very big in our city, especially with the big box stores.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. You have a consensus?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, item number six.
Council item of special interest on prohibiting signs in the median.
Mayor, members of the council, this is in response to Councilmember Tomachoff's council item of special interest just from two weeks ago. And I'm bringing this forward now, looking for council consensus because we have a bit of an opportunity. As you know, the UDC is going through a complete rewrite. That revision is being heard by the Planning Commission this Thursday, the 27th. If council gave consensus today to include language within the UDC, which is where staff believes the language would belong, or best fit would be in the sign portion of the temporary sign portion of the UDC, prohibiting signs in the median, then we could make that revision through the consultant and have the Planning Commission hear it and make a recommendation to council. Ultimately, political signs are the signs that are most often seen in the median, although there can be some other temporary signs, like a realtor sign or something like that. The political signs is what I want to talk about because it is regulated by state law on what cities can and can't do. One of the things the state law says is that if it creates a safety issue, the city can prohibit the sign from being placed wherever the safety issue is created. You just adopted an ordinance last voting meeting prohibiting people from entering the roadway other than a designated crosswalk or for remaining in the median. So this does fit nicely with that ordinance that you just adopted. And if this council so chooses, I think it would be very defensible to say that we believe as a community that being in the median, even temporarily, to pound a sign in, is unsafe. It's unsafe for motorists on the roadway and unsafe for the pedestrian that would necessarily have to enter that roadway in an undesignated crosswalk area to get, to get to that median to pound that sign in. And we've already said publicly that we believe that's not a safe practice. So we're likely covered on that piece. The city of Peoria has already adopted this, and to my knowledge, they haven't been challenged on the state statute. So again, seeking council consensus today on whether we want to make the UDC change now, before it's in front of the Planning Commission. If council wants more conversation, we have an opportunity in the late winter, or early winter, I should say, January, February, when the consultant will be speaking to you about the changes directly in a workshop. This change can be made then. So I don't want to act like I'm putting pressure, we only have two days. You have plenty of time, but if we wanted to do it through the Planning Commission, we have the opportunity now, which is why I'm bringing it so quickly.
Well, I don't actually support it myself, but it looks like you have a consensus, so.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Do we want to try to do the last one, or go to lunch? Okay, so we'll just hold that last one for the next one. Okay, so with that, can I get a motion? Go into exec.
Mayor?
Okay, be clear, this is a motion to go into exec session.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I've got an item of interest, you're going to skip over that because of time? If not, I have one. I can be quick.
I guess we should do that, shouldn't we?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's hold off on a motion. City manager report?
Again, I did mention about the community outreach for our downtown, October 26th, and that's all my report.
Okay, city attorney?
Mayor, I have none.
No report? Okay, items of special interest for the council. Councilmember Clark?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Hugh?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Melner?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Councilmember Turner?
Not today, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, I do have one really quick here. There's no secret that every municipality in the state has an issue with homelessness. Some very complex and difficult to deal with. It's getting much worse here in Glendale. And what I'm asking, my item of interest is that, and just report back to the council, accelerate any solution or initiative that the city's working on to resolve or reduce, eliminate homelessness in Glendale, and accelerate it sooner than you plan to get it out. And I'd like to know when that is coming out, any plans we have in place. I know we have, we're working on one. Thank you.
I have nothing. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion?